All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, thank you for that. Need a couple of minutes, make sure we're on TV. If we could, Jimmy, when you're done, let's get the AC down just a bit more. It's gonna be, it's gonna be filled. Well, welcome this afternoon on this beautiful June 11th, 2024. Council starts today in chambers and we are going to immediately recess into executive session. And then hopefully, we will begin our regularly scheduled session right at 2:00. So at this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following. Pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, and personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. With that, at this time, City Council is in recess to executive session. All right, good afternoon. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. All right, everybody, we're gonna get started. It's 2:01, we are reconvening back, we began at 1:00 and went immediately to executive session. So we'll start off with Agenda Item 2. Today, I'm pleased to have Colin Lundstrom, the deacon of wor-, he's a deacon of worship and administration with Fellowship Church of Lubbock. So Colin's gonna come up, if you'd all please stand. And then, once he's done, if you remain standing, Ms. Patterson-Harris will immediately move us into our pledges of allegiance. And then, we will begin with our call to order and comments. Colin?
Would you pray with me? Father and Evan, we ask now that your name would be honored in this moment, in this room, in this meeting today, that your name would be honored in Lubbock, Texas, honored by our city's leaders. And Lord, I ask that you would remind them and all of us of their sacred task today and any time that they gather, that they are citizens who've been called to govern as statesmen and women in our city. And we acknowledge, Lord, before you, before man, that it is good, it is right to support our government leaders in their capacity in their office. And especially when they recognize their stewardship to protect persons, to protect liberty, to protect property of those of us who reside within this region and to guard even against unjust and immoral laws and actions by higher authorities. And Lord, help remind them and all of us, it is a sacred duty, it's defined by your word, it is defined and proceeds from you as our God. And so, to that end, and for the business at hand today, I would ask that you would stir within their hearts an affection for the city, the citizens of Lubbock. Lord, grant them a specific love for the people that live in this place as they fulfill their calling to be persuasive stewards of the public authority you've sovereignly entrusted to them. May they govern, govern today in service of the truth and what is truly good to those that they govern. Give them a desire, Lord, to be model citizens and honorable leaders before us by which we may cheerfully follow. May they not find their moral standards within a political order itself, but instead seek to elevate and even reform that order for the better. Guard them from those things that are folly, those things that are poor decisions, guard them from ill-gotten gain, Lord. And may they be principled in all their conduct, truth-driven in all the motivations they have, prudent in their ambitions. Give them a measured and hopeful expectation in how to lead us. And Lord, may the citizens of this great town be eager to respect their governance even where we may disagree. And so, Lord, help us to be reminded that to you alone belong our land, our homes, our labors, our city. But also help those of us who are governed willingly and happily obey your command to respect, to submit to, to pray for those that are our leaders today. And it is in humility we ask all of this and for your help, amen.
Amen. If you remain standing and join us as we offer the pledge of the United States and the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, you may be seated.
All right, now we're ready to begin. First of all, we have some bright shiny faces today. Welcome, everybody, to City Council. If you've never been before, we welcome you here. I know several of you in the crowd have been here before. We look forward to hearing from a few of you here momentarily. All right, we're going to start with citizen comments. And if you, again, I'll go on the presumption that this is your first time to give citizen comments. You'll have three minutes. Once you come up, if you please give your name and address, and then you will begin. Jimmy has a nice little bell for you at the two and a half minute mark. He'll give you a warning and then you can complete within the three-minute timeframe. If you please tell us which agenda item you are speaking on. 6.1 and 6.2 seem to be the majority of these. If you recall, just for your purposes, 6.1 is the zone change and then 6.2 is a resolution of intent regarding Highland Oaks. All right? So we'll start with Colby Norris.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Colby Norris, I live at 16001 County Road 1860 in Lubbock, Texas. I'm a resident of Highland Oaks. I also have the privilege of serving as the 2024 Treasurer of the Highland Oaks Homeowners Association. Over the past few years, we've had the opportunity to work with city staff and council members. There's some new faces on the council, we look forward to working with you as well. We've developed great relationships, working hand-in-hand to navigate the voluntary annexation process for Highland Oaks. It's been a learning process and we appreciate the time and resources that the city has dedicated to the project. Water is the most critical resource for sustainable home ownership. This is one of many milestones that will be required to be placed on the November ballot. We appreciate the willingness and cooperation we received up to this point. And we look forward to working with you and your team in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mary Kreitz.
Hello, all. Mary Kreitz, 4617 8th Street. I'm here on the Overton case, I believe that's 6.1. And I'm here again to ask each of you to vote no on this zone case. The zone change is not about the proposed project that you learned about at the last council hearing. There's no guarantee that that project will happen or even those develop-, the developer would follow what he recommended or suggested he was going to be doing. The question today is if a 75-foot-tall building with nearly 100% lot coverage containing perhaps 1,200 beds and only 150 parking spaces, is that appropriate for that, that land? The answer is no. Because under vertical mixed use, that is what would be allowed. And those are, there's no restrictions on this zone change in terms of beds and cars. The requested zone change is not also in accordance with the land use map, and that is a big deal. But as important, this zone change, if you approve it, it's a slippery slope. Let me explain. Given that staff says that vertical mixed use can be used with an apartment building selling only toothpaste and popcorn from, to the public from the lobby, well, first off, that's disconcerting, disingenuous. But the bigger issue that if that's allowed, please know that there's no minimum height requirement for vertical mixed use. No vertical, no minimum height. So developers of two-story apartment buildings all over town will be motivated to use vertical mixed use in your council district, each of yours. To be able to utilize the vertical mixed use unlimited lot coverage versus the maximum 65% lot coverage allowed by apartments. As a bonus, there's no infill restrictions. And of course, the vertical mixed use parking ratio is less than half of the apartment parking ratio, which is 25% less than the apartments were required to comply with last year. There are high-density residential zones in every council district. Allowing this interpretation of vertical mixed use here opens the door for two-story apartment building uses using vertical mixed use in every council district. Your constituents will not be happy with that level of density and the unparked cars parking in the street, blocking driveways, et cetera. Approval of this case sets a bad precedent for future high-density, high-density residential development, perhaps only two stories tall, around town and in your district. Vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitz. Gail Robinson.
Good afternoon, I'm Gail Robinson. I live at 2106 16th Street in the Overton South area. I've actually lived in that home for 43 years, raised my two children. And now I've got four grandchildren and two greats. And directly across the street from me is the Treehouse Apartments, that's now the Nomad Apartments. And that has been not pleasant for me or my neighborhood for many, many years. We've had, I pick up trash on my block every single day. There's, a lot of times, there's fighting going on, we've had gunshots, we've had lots of crime in that area. Just in that, that two-story building, it has 19 units and that's really not very large, I guess, compared to a seven-story building. So I would urge you to please vote no for our area to cut down on crime and trash and a lot of traffic in our area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Sally Abbey.
My name is Sally Abbey and I live at 4607 23rd Street in District 3. I'm a trust, the, I am the trustee chair for St. John's United Methodist Church, which is directly across the street from Item 6.1, the student housing complex. Before I start, I'd like for all the members and friends of St. John's who are in attendance today to please stand. Thank you. I have a long-time interest and commitment to the South Overton neighborhood dating back to my college days, my years in the City of Lubbock Planning Department, and through my membership at St. John's United Methodist Church. As Councilperson Patterson-Harris said, you don't have to live in a neighborhood to be a resident, or feel like a resident. You've seen the church's objections in the reply forms that we have sent in. You've heard them in our previous comments to planning and zoning in City Council. So I won't reiterate all of those today, I'm sure you're pleased about that. We have asked repeatedly how a high-rise student housing project can benefit our neighborhood. And there are really no positive answers. The leadership of St. John's met with the developer and we also participated in the, the meeting of the, with the developer and the neighborhood, and there were still no answers. Many of you know Jack Thompson, who's an apartment owner and a longtime member of St. John's. And he detailed this effort in an email to all of you, which I hope you've been able to, to read. He wrote, "When we met with the developers at St. John's, I asked them to tell us how their project would benefit the neighborhood. They had no answer, frankly, because it does not benefit the neighborhood. The best they could come up with was that it might spur more commercial development on University Avenue. They simply talked about it benefiting tech. Tech does not need their help, if they would, if they did, they would be here to support this." In those same meetings, we, we, there were others of us who were there, we asked the developers what their typical ownership of a project is and they responded, five years or less, if a good buyer comes along. In fact, they told us that they sold one on opening day. So no matter what promises they make to you, these folks are not making a long-term commitment to the City of Lubbock or to this neighborhood. On the Unified Development Code landing page, the statement is made that, quote, "The UDC is the means for implementing the vision and preferences of the citizens as to the types, patterns, and quality of future development." It feels as though this project has not been reviewed using that standard, but instead that the vision of the landowner and developers have been considered in reviewing this case. This project will harm the historic neighborhood around it and St. John's stands with the South Overton neighborhood in opposition to this rezoning. We urge you to vote against this case. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Abbey. Holly Humphries.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, my name is Holly Humphries and I live at 3008 26th Street. I tried in the dark of night to get a letter sent out, Sunday night, it's, oh, it got a few errors in it. But so I thought I would highlight a few different facts today and I hope I can stay within the three minutes. One claim asserts that, of course, I'm speaking in opposition to Agenda Item 6.1 against redoing the zoning from MDR to HDR. The rationale continues to be made that Lubbock needs to grow. Well, the problem is, is that this building does not address growth. It is going to not accommodate students because the last three years show that Texas Tech's enrollment has actually been level. There's been no increase in student enrollment growth. And that's predicted in the next couple of years. That growth will remain pretty stable, particularly as President Lawrence Chauvinet has capped the enrollment for freshmen, which means tech won't keep extrapolating and growing and growing and growing in enrollment. A university is limited by its growth, by the number of seats it can seat students in lecture halls primarily and as well as in their own residential halls. Furthermore, I would like to draw a comparison to ULOFs, which is a sister type of building that mirrors the prototype of this one. It's seven stories high, it covers an entire city block, and as noted before, I lived there for 15 years. All the while I lived there, two major wings stood empty. They could not fill the building because they were charging too much in rent. I could live there because I was a retired Texas teacher and had come to tech to seek my doctoral degree. So for anyone to say that this building will be filled with tech students because of walkability, walkability applies to ULOFs, but students couldn't afford to live there, so they didn't. And, and I myself was an RA there and saw those empty buildings. I found John Hinckley's desk, by the way, on the second floor of property storage room. Anyway, if we look at ULOFs as an example, its assessed 2024 tax value was $20 million. Actually, that number gets a little more complicated, for which its current off-site owners who live in Pittsburgh, where I attended undergraduate school at Carnegie Mellon University, paid a total of $344,349 in property taxes. So these types of buildings are being built primarily to generate profit, not to serve students, not to serve the city's growth. And the city's being preyed upon by predatory operations that would have the city council members believe that they are promoting growth, but it isn't about that, it's all about the profit for them and they'll sell off this building as soon as they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. I'm glad Jody Foster's not here today. Gretchen Scott.
Gretchen Scott, I live at 4012 69th Street in Lubbock. And I know y'all have heard, this will be three times at least, all the rational, well-thought-out, factual presentations by the concerned citizens of Lubbock. They've quoted back certain portions of city documents stating what your goal, what your task is, which is to represent your constituents. There's been all kinds of things said about all of this, but Parallel didn't elect you and Mr. Abrahams didn't elect you. And some of you really weren't hardly elected at all because you ran unopposed. So anyway, there is, so there's, there's, this is who you need to represent, is the people who put you in office, who voted for you, that's your task, that's your job. We're not all able to live in southwest Lubbock, we don't want to live in southwest Lubbock. We like living inside the loop. We want to protect our neighborhoods inside the loop. I'm, I want, I'm asking to vote with the people who elected you. The zoning that's in place now, which you've heard a million times, everybody supports the zoning that's in place now. The building that could be built on there, people have deemed is appropriate. Everybody can live with that, we are not anti-development. We are anti a zoning change allowing the seven-story building to be built. And also, like Mary Kreitz said, you have no guarantee what's gonna go on there, you're giving these people a blanket zone. If you would not vote to have this high-density kind of situation near your home, I'm asking you to not vote to put it in someone else's home area. This is in your hands. The oldest and most historic neighborhood in our city is at risk. I think that's been made clear and plain, it's at risk. So I'm asking you to vote no for this zone change. Represent those of us who care. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Charles Colbert.
Hello, thanks for having me, Chuck Colbert, I live at 1220 Broadway Metro Tower. I also own three different businesses there at Metro Tower. First of all, good on you, Councilwoman Garcia, for listening to the other side, being patient, doing your due diligence, and then making a decision based on all of that and changing your mind. Based on your intelligence and not your emotions. Your opponents on this project seem to be making decisions to go against, based on emotions and not so much a whole lot of intelligence. That is what holds downtown Lubbock back. People making decisions on their emotions and not their intelligence. Oftentimes, I choose against my own emotions because my intelligence told me to do so. This is a very hard thing to do and get used to, mostly because we are holding on to past traumas. We spend our entire lives making decisions based on our emotions, so it's hard to stop. You will never hear me say, "I follow my gut or my heart made me do it. I had to completely change everything about me and my sobriety." This is one of them. Does a deer drink from a stagnant pond or a running body, body of water? The citizens and the community leaders of Lubbock must stop waiting in the stagnant pond and start riding the waves and rapids of progress and life. Nothing grows in or on the shores of a stagnant pond, but life and beauty is abundant in and around running, turning, white foam bubbling rivers. As for me, I will stand for the voice of reason. I will remember to be humble, to be kind, to use intelligence. I will listen to, understand others' opinions and ideas and not listen to just respond. Have compassion for others' opinions and have consideration for their stance. I ask all of you to do the same. I spent a good portion of my life as a warrior and I chose to remain one, but in a very different capacity. Not because my gut tells me to do so, because my brain does and it demands that I do so. Remember, a garden does not grow in a stagnant body of water. Also, don't be afraid to plant a tree in that garden just because you yourself may not benefit from its cooling shades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. All right, council, moving to Agenda Item 4, I have the Minutes 4.1, which is the April 16th, the 2024 Special City Council with EUB, the May 14th, the regular City Council, and then the May 14th swearing-in ceremonies, is there a motion to approve 4.1? Thank you, Ms. Martines-Garcia, is there a second? Thank you. Tim, sorry, they, they sound exactly the same, I'm gonna get it right by the end of the day. All right. All in favor of approval of 4.1, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, 4.1 carries 7-0. All right, council, we're moving to the consent agenda, this is 5.1 through 5.29. There's been a request on 5.20 to remove that. There's still, Mr. Atkins, there's a little homework to be done on an appraisal, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. If I could, I would ask that council take this item separately and request that you postpone to date certain July the 9th. All right, it's not a zoning issue, there's a property issue that involves some city stuff.
All right, and that's request to remove 5.20 to a date certain July the 9th? Is there a motion to approve of that? Thank you, Ms. Martines-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson, all right, all in favor of, let's just double-check one more time, we all know the rules, kinda like going to school. Let's check our phones, make sure those are turned off. All right, I have a motion and a second on 5.2, removing to date certain July 9th of 2024. All in favor of approval of that, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, 5.20 will be moved to July 9th, 2024, and that carries 7-0. All right, we also have requests to pull 5.19 and further discussion on 5.29. All right, 5.19, I'll turn that over to you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I am not, let's see. I don't have a presentation on here, I don't know if you all have it in front of you to follow along.
Council, I believe it was emailed from Ms. Barthold? Does everybody have that in front of them? Do you need, do we need to just get it and put on there somewhere?
I will leave that up to you all, I'll be very brief.
You're fine. All right, I think everybody has it up here, I know the audience doesn't, but we can certainly share that momentarily. Go ahead and, let's start through the overview.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, nice to be with you, members of the council. I am going to be presenting on Item 5.19, which is a Market Lubbock Downtown Facade Grant being granted to 1012 17th Street. And because we have a few new council members and possibly some in the audience that aren't familiar with this program, I thought I would just give you a quick overview of what the downtown master, or what the downtown grant program entails. You still hear me okay, I'm gonna keep going, okay. So the downtown grant program was started in 2016 by Market Lubbock. And it is a grant program that is used within the Central Business District Tax Increment Financing Reinvestment Zone Boundary, which is typically referred to as downtown. Reinvestment Zone Boundary, which is typically referred to as downtown Lubbock. It extends a little bit further to the north and to the south than maybe what you think of when you think of downtown, but encompasses the general area of downtown. There are two types of grants that are available for property owners to take advantage of within this program. One for facade improvements, which are really anything being done to the exterior of a building, and then one for permissible improvements, which could be inside or outside, but are improvements that require a permit from the city of Lubbock. The facade program will reimburse up to 50% of the expenses spent on the project with an amount not to exceed $25,000. And just as a reminder, this is a reimbursable grant, so the property owners are responsible for spending the money on their improvements upfront. They submit invoices or receipts, and then they are reimbursed for those improvements. The permissible project, or the permissible program, will reimburse up to 10% of improvements at a maximum amount of $100,000. So if a property were to utilize both of these grant programs, the maximum that they could receive back would be $125,000 per grant. Think we're up and running. I wanted to give you just a couple of statistics about the program to date. Again, this was started in 2016. Since that time, Market Lubbock has granted 167 grants for just over about $4.5 million in total grants given. The private investment amount that has been put towards these property improvements is over $100 million. So as you can see, it's been a tremendously successful program, one that we still see a lot of interest and activity in, and I think has really contributed to some pretty significant improvements in our downtown. One statistic that I like to share with you that Jorge at Market Lubbock keeps us, keeps in front of us, is our ratio of public to private investment dollars. With our downtown grant program, oh my gosh, downtown grant program specifically, for every dollar of public investment Market Lubbock is investing in these projects, we're receiving $23.15 of private investment, which is really incredible. Any questions so far on the program? Okay. The project that you will be considering today is for J&amp;W Plumbing, Heating, and AC. They are located at 1012 17th Street. They are an applicant in the facade grant program. Their project amount is estimated to be $10,000, and so the grant reimbursement grant amount would be $5,000. And they are planning to update their parking lot at this location. Apologies for the technology issues, happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Can you give examples of some of the businesses that have already been successful with this grant?
Sure, so, one of the things that's really exciting about this program is it ranges from $5,000 grants to maxing out the $125,000 grants. So if we're looking on the, on the large end of the spectrum, we were able to contribute to the Metro Tower Low Income Housing Project, which we just had a representative from. That project was really exciting, they had to get really creative on how to make a project like that work as a historic renovation and a low-income housing tax credit project. And so we were able to contribute grant dollars to make that project happen. We've had Dirk's Chicken across the street on 13th Street is kind of on the smaller end. They utilized our grant program for their facade exterior. We've had law offices, we've had doctors' offices, we've had restaurants. 1500 Broadway has had multiple companies be able to take advantage of improvements that they've made to their specific areas of that building, which is an iconic building in our downtown. So I could go on and on, Jorge could definitely go on and on, and Market Lubbock is here as well, if you have specific questions for them.
Mr. Gashin?
Thank you. And if I may, I think maybe direct my questions to Mr. Atkinson. This is a grant program administered by Market Lubbock, correct?
Yes.
And it's primarily funded from property taxes that are collected from all across the city, correct?
Yes.
And then downtown grant program in particular is funded by property taxes that come from all across the city?
All of these grant programs are from general tax revenues, yes.
Even though this property is located in the Central Business District, TIF, it's not funds from the TIF that are supporting this grant program, correct?
Yes.
And the applicant is a for-profit business?
Yes.
And this grant would be used to make improvements to private property, correct?
Correct.
And so if we approve this grant, it's going to use the tax dollars from property taxpayers to improve private property of a for-profit business in the geographic area that the government has selected?
Yes.
Those are all my questions, thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Brown? All right, any other questions of Ms. Brown or Mr. Atkinson? All right, Ms. Brown, you're off the hook.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Atkinson, would you maybe briefly address, you know, for new council members, the budget process and the budget of last year, as, as how it went, and how Market Lubbock's budget process for when they come to council, and what that would look like for this new council coming up in budget season?
Certainly, Mayor, glad to do that. Council Market Lubbock, as is Lita Visit Lubbock and the related entities, are considered component units of the city of Lubbock. They have various different funding sources, but they are funding their component units. As we roll into your budget process, you'll see this the 1st of August, those units will have all submitted to you an expense and a revenue budget. In the case of the grant program, this is a line item expense in the Market Lubbock budget, I believe it is $1,075,000 for this fiscal year. So each August, the council will review those budgets, they will look at those proposed major expenses, and then decide yes or no to fund those. In the case that we have today, this is in an approved line item that the council voted on last August and last September. Mayor, did I get to all your question there?
Yeah, I think that, that kind of covers that, for a nice brief overview. All right, any other questions of Mr. Atkinson, I think Market Lubbock is here, and others? All right, seeing none, we can move into further discussion if necessary. Let's go ahead and take 5.19. Is there a motion to approve 5.19? Thank you, Mr. Collins? I'm going to give that to Mr. Rose, just because I can't tell the difference in the voices, sorry, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, is there a discussion or comments on 5.19? Mr. Gashin?
I find that there is no compelling government interest advanced by approving this grant. We are subsidizing parking lot resurfacing with property tax dollars that's been collected from all across the city, and this grant program can't be compared to creation of a public good like a park or a street. And really, this grant is a transfer of wealth from taxpayers to a private business. And it reminds me of many of the worst aspects of a centrally planned economy, where the government picks winners and losers in a marketplace, and chooses a geographic area where we want businesses to be successful at the expense of their competitors in a different part of town. I think that a business in downtown is not worthy of property tax dollars in comparison to a business outside of there, and I can't support the government distortion of a competitive marketplace with this. I think once we allow government to start picking winners or losers, granting money, especially tax dollars taken from households or other businesses, that it's going to create clashing interests and unreasonable demands on the government to take money from one group of people and give it to another. I'm opposed to the grant program in general, and I understand that it was approved by the previous budget cycle, but for now, I think in order to advance the purposes of reduced spending, limited government, and lower taxes, I encourage the council to vote against this grant.
Thank you, Mr. Gashin. Any other comments, further discussion? You still have questions of Council, of Market Lubbock, if you have. Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. In order for a city to grow and thrive, downtowns across the nation have been so significant and so important. Unfortunately, for a very long time, the downtown of the city of Lubbock has not been given the necessary support. And now we have a program that allows us to ignite it and make some very good things happen. I can give you one amazing example, and that is Buddy Holly Hall. I can also give you events, that's the First Friday Art Trail, that attracts a variety of faces and brings about 20,000 people in one night to downtown Lubbock. And it is these types of funds that help us to continue and sustain and build on the necessary needs and growth opportunities for a city like Lubbock. We've got to get away from the old thinking and move to new thinking. And I think that these types of grants, they're competitive, they have to work for them, and it makes, it's not an easy thing for just, we're not just handing out dollars, they're vetted, and they're required to go through a process. So I urge council to support this particular grant.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, Mr. Collins?
If I could also point out a couple other things, Mayor. This grant program is utilized on North University and on 34th Street, in addition to the downtown area. And so I think we're not segmenting a particular portion of our city, we're segmenting the inner portion of our city, which allows us to help sustain those areas that aren't brand-new. And, and brand-new's easy, but I think in sustaining some of these older areas, this is, this is important that we're being able to do this. Also make note that generally, when these improvements are made to these facilities, they see a property tax valuation increase, and thus, a property tax increase. And I think that's very beneficial to our downtown area as well. So just wanted to make note of those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
I just want to point out that there are, a North University, and it's called an empowerment grant for North University, for 34th Street, and for, it was originally just in East Lubbock. And I think they're so significant, and you're already seeing the benefits from offering these types of opportunities. So just to add to what Tim said, thank you.
All right, thank you, council members. Seeing no other names pop up, we have a motion and a second on 5.19. All in favor of approval of 5.19, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries 6 to 1. All right, we're now going to move to 5.29. This is a resolution as far as direction of unallocated, or could potentially be unallocated ARPA funds. I think this is something that the prior council discussed and went through on our planning session from the fall. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Atkinson, or?
I can tee it up and
Tee it up.
Leave it to the others real quick. Mayor, council, as noted, when you had your planning session back in January, one of the discussions is related to the pending deadline, the impending deadline, for when you must allocate or tag your ARPA dollars. Prior discussions have been that probably the best place to go with those as we move forward is the West Lubbock Water System Expansion. The resolution before you was put forth by council members Gashin and Rose, it will formalize that, and it will help us. I think we will be back at least one, if not two more times, as we run towards that December 31st deadline, to be sure that none of those dollars disappear, because that is what will happen if we do not reallocate by that point. And with that, council member?
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. All right, let's go ahead and do it, Mr. Gashin, let's go ahead and take that separate. Let's do, I have a motion to approve 5.29. Thank you, Mr. Rose. Let's give Mr. Gashin, it's his motion. All right, Mr. Gashin has a second. All right, now we have a motion and a second on 5.29. All right, Mr. Gashin, you had a comment?
Also note that the West Lubbock Water Expansion is going to be funded in a large part through the water bill, and so by allocating ARPA dollars to this, we will be reducing the amount paid on the water bill as part of this infrastructure investment.
That is correct, thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments or discussion on 5.29? All right, we have a motion and a second on 5.29. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, council, now to go back and take 5.1 through 5.29, we will exclude 5.19, 5.20, and 5.29, and take the remainder collectively. Is there a motion to approve the remaining portions of the consent agenda? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right, we have a motion on the consent agenda exclusive of 5.19, 5.20, and 5.29. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. Now moving to our regular agenda. All right, let's go ahead and begin, we've got 6.1. Is anyone on 6.2, is anyone doing a presentation on that one? I don't think so. Okay, I had made a note, and I apologize for that, all right. All right, so we've got 6.2, which is, let's go ahead and move to 6.2, which is a resolution on planning. Council had previously discussed that in executive session, Kristen? You're on 6.1, correct? You're on 6.2, good. My ones and twos are backwards today, Kristen, I'm sorry.
Located south of 146th Street, east of Frankfurt Avenue, this is the Highland Oaks subdivision. This process is a little different from your typical petition annexation request. This will go through a process with an election. And so here's the timeline of that process. If council adopts the resolution of intent today, we will send notice to the property owners between June 12th and the 18th. We will hold public hearings July 9th and 23rd, Election Day November 5th, to, an additional notice to property owners if the election passes, two more public hearings, and two ordinance readings completing in February of 2025. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right, council, have any questions of Ms. Sager or other staff that may be available on 6.2? Okay, is there, could I get a motion on 6.2? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right, any further discussion or questions on 6.2? All right, again, this is a resolution, no other action, and all in favor of approval of 6.2, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, moving back to 6.1, we've had plenty of, lots of discussion two weeks ago in public hearings on this. Staff is available if council has any other questions. Do I have a motion to approve 6.1? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Rose. All right, any further discussion or comments on 6.1? Or Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I want to thank everybody for coming out, it's appreciated, all of the input that we've had from both sides. I believe that I've done my due diligence in my decision today, and I just want to thank, again, all of the folks for their patience and understanding, and, you know, thank you to council as well.
Any other comments or discussion on 6.1? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.1, please say aye. Aye?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, you're right. See? My notes.
Sorry to interrupt.
Ms. Patterson-Harris? She told me I was going to do that. All right, council, we have the ordinance as amended, that you have in front of you. This is the ordinance with the whereas statement of paragraph 2, whereas the city council of the city of Lubbock further finds that the proposed zoning change is not arbitrary or capricious or unreasonable, that the nature of the proposed zoning change is substantially consistent with neighboring properties. That's the paragraph for the general use language. So if that, I would ask for a motion, and I'm going to back up and leave the motion tabled of approval of the ordinance. Let's back up and take a motion to substitute this.
Yes, sir.
And is there a motion to use this before council's substitution? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, thank you, is that Mr. Collins? All right, so now we have a motion in the substitution of the ordinance, essentially the same. And a second. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear at this moment that this is not in reference to approval or denial of the actual zone issue.
Correct.
But just the language itself within this ordinance. I didn't want anybody to gasp or whatever.
Yes, and that, and thank you again, that's correct, and this is just the legal changes from Mitch, since he's the only one here today. And this is just the legal changes from Mitch, since he's the only one here today. Everybody else got to go to a conference, Mitch, at South Padre. But Mitch is here with all of us. All right, I have a motion to substitute. All in favor of approval of the motion to substitute, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right, just the substitution is carries 7 to 0. All right, now I also have a motion to approve... let me go ahead and get that one more time, just so we're clear. Motion to approve of the substituted ordinance. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Rose. All right, now we had discussion prior. Now, all in favor of approval of the substituted motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. I didn't hear your vote on the substitute ordinance. All right, motion carries 6 to 1. All right, motion carries 6.1. With that, it is 2:52. Do you have a comment? We have a motion to approve. All right. With that, we are adjourned. It is... Sorry, I'm going to get a time for courting. 2:52. Is that right? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.